Welcome, everyone, to the meeting of the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners. We'd like to call that to order. Our first order of business will be led in prayer by Commissioner Turner, then Commissioner Ely will lead us into Pledge to the Flag.
Let's pray. Father, it is good to be back in the courthouse to serve the citizens of Rutherford County. I ask that you be with each one of us tonight. For those who are here tonight, after being elected, we congratulate them. I just ask that you also settle their minds, allow them to seek clarity on what you wish them to do as elected officials, and that they honor those who voted them into office. Just be with us tonight as we deal with the people's business. We're thankful for this opportunity. We live in the greatest country in the world, and we do take considerable time to praise you, to allow us to be here and make sure that we honor you, and we honor those that we serve tonight. We ask all these things in the name of your Son, Jesus. Amen.
(Inaudible).
Okay. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Commissioner Schaefer.
Yes.
Commissioner Piercy.
Here.
Commissioner Jordan.
Here.
Commissioner P.
Here.
Commissioner Cook.
Here.
Commissioner Jernigan.
Here.
Commissioner Kusch.
President.
Commissioner Reed.
Here.
Commissioner Gurley.
Here.
Commissioner Turner.
Here.
Commissioner Allen.
Here.
Commissioner Stevens.
Here.
Commissioner Johnson.
Here.
Commissioner Baum.
Here.
Commissioner Nipper.
Here.
Commissioner Dodd.
Here.
Commissioner Phillips.
Commissioner McAdoo.
Here.
Commissioner Ely.
Here.
Commissioner Gooch.
Here.
Commissioner Serenio. We have a quorum, 21 present.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Okay, you've received a copy of the minutes of the last meeting, and do we have a motion considering its approval? Commissioner Phillips?
Thank you, Mayor Burgess. I've reviewed those minutes. I find them to be in order, and move that we dispense with the reading and that they be adopted.
And a second from Mr. Nipper and Ms. Cook there. Did anyone have anything that they identified that needed to be added or corrected? If not, then we're ready to vote. All of you in favor of that, please say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? All right, thank you very much. Now we have an opportunity for public comments, and we do have one person that wishes to speak tonight, and I'll remind this person that try to hold your comments to three minutes, please. Mr. Aaron Walls. Mr. Walls. Okay, he has not chosen to appear with us in tonight, so we will... That's the only person we had that had signed up to speak, so we'll be ready to move on with the other parts of our agenda. Next is Elections and Confirmations, and Commissioner Turner.
Thank you, Mayor Burgess. Good evening, Commissioners. First order of business under Elections and Confirmations that we need to elect the notaries, and I make a motion for their approval.
And a second from who? Mr. Phillips, thank you. Anyone have anyone that they had been notified that they needed to add or otherwise take care of? If not, then all of you in favor of that, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
We also need to fill the vacancy on the Board of Zoning Appeals to fill the unexpired term of Jared Barrett. Steering will like to nominate Mr. William Harper, and I make a motion for his approval.
And a second from Commissioner Johnson. All right, thank you. Anyone else wish to nominate anyone? If not, all of you in favor of the unexpired term being filled by Mr. Barrett, please say aye. Any opposed? All right, thank you.
Steering will like to also announce there's a... We're filling a vacancy on the Beer Board that would also fill the unexpired term of Mr. Jared Barrett. Steering will like to nominate Mr. Leslie Smith, and I make a motion for his approval.
Okay, Mr. Phillips, second, thank you. Anyone else wish to speak on that matter or nominate anyone? If not, everyone in favor of that, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you very much again.
We're also required to fill the vacancy on the Correctional Works Center Board to fill the unexpired term of Mr. Virgil Gammon. Steering nominates Mr. David Puckett, and I make a motion for his approval.
All right, and Mr. Schaefer, a second there. Anyone else wish to be nominated? If not, all of you in favor of that, then please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you very much.
Steering will like to announce an alternate vacancy on the Beer Board to fill the unexpired term of Leslie Smith Jr. That term will expire in 2020. Steering will also like to announce two vacancies on the Codes Enforcement Adjustments and Appeals Board. Steering will like to also announce the following vacancies on the Audit Committee: two Commissioners, one citizen to serve a four-year term, and one CPA to also serve a four-year term. Steering will like to announce a vacancy on the Board of Zoning Appeals to fill the unexpired term of Mr. Michael Rather, and that term expires in October of 2021. Steering will like to announce Commissioner vacancy on Community Care Board of Directors. Steering will like to announce one Commissioner vacancy on the Insurance Committee. Steering will like to announce one appointment of Judicial Commissioner Mr. Savon Cole. And Steering will like to also announce a reappointment of Jim Everwater to the Rutherford County Regional Planning Commission. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Turner. Next on our agenda is a resolution to approve the Consent Agenda. Commissioner Phillips, please.
Thank you, Mayor Burgess. I've also reviewed that Consent Agenda. I find all those items to be appropriate to place on the agenda, and I move that the Consent Agenda be adopted.
And second, Commissioner Jordan. Does anyone wish to remove any of those items and move them to the normal agenda? If not, then please cast your votes.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
All right, then, please record the votes.
Twenty-one yes. Motion passes.
Well, we are ready to start the reports by the standing committees, and we'll come back to our public hearings at 6:30. So I think that will probably give us enough time for Commissioner Jordan to have those discussions regarding a Budget, Finance, and Investment Committee.
That was everybody this evening. Somebody told me since this was my last time up here to say something memorable and witty. I said, "Well, I haven't said anything memorable and witty yet, so I know the point's starting now." So we'll just proceed on. We've got item J-1A, a General Fund Budgets Amendment. Resolution, be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners, that the General Fund be amended as follows. Circuit Court Clerk, decrease revenue... Circuit Clerk excess fees, $180,510, and increase expenditures for the related benefits as for six additional deputy clerks for the new Circuit Court Judge and Juvenile Magistrate. For the property assessor, we've got increased expenditures, $10,000 for furniture and fixtures, and decrease unassigned fund balance, $10,000 for the filing system they need. We've got juvenile court, we've got decrease in unassigned fund balance, $3,718, and increase expenditures for the related benefits for funding for the magistrate to recognize previous county service for an employee that had a different level of service than what's budgeted for. And we've got committee pay to decrease unassigned fund balance, $27,750, and increase... I guess I'll have to read all these. Transfers in, $4,105 in revenue, increase expenditures, travel, $1,000. Board and committee fees, $17,000. Social Security. What board and... Different boards and committees and the associated benefits, and this is for all the appointed committees, and this is to raise that pay for $50 if I'm not mistaken. And this is just to hold the money in the budget. This will have to be approved during steering later on tonight. If that is approved, then this money will be in the appropriate line item. Resolve this 16th day of August, 2018. Mr. Chairman, I so move.
And a second from Mr. Serenio and Schaefer as well. Okay, any questions or discussion? There being none, then, please cast your votes.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Please record the votes.
Twenty yes, one abstain. Motion passes.
Item J-1B, Solid Waste Fund Budgets Amendment. Resolution, be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners, that the Solid Waste Fund be amended as follows. Sanitation, education, increase expenditures for motor vehicles, $3,000, and decrease assigned fund balance, $3,000. This is additional funding for a litter trailer. It was actually talked about in budget but didn't actually make it into the minutes or into the official record for the additional money for the cost of this trailer. Resolve this 16th day of August, 2018. Mr. Chairman, I so move.
And a second, Commissioner Piercy. Any discussion or questions on that? All right, please cast your votes.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the votes, please.
Twenty-one yes. Motion passes.
Item J-1C, Special Purpose Fund Budgets Amendment. Resolution, be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners, that the Special Purpose Fund be amended as follows. Sheriff's Office, decrease restricted for public safety, $107,000. Increase expenditures in service training, $2,500. Confidential drug enforcement, $28,000. Instructional supplies and materials, $2,500. Uniform, $5,000. Other supplies and materials, $2,500. Law enforcement equipment, $60,000, and other capital outlay, $6,500. This is the budget. This money back in the appropriate line items after the books were closed on the previous fiscal year. Resolve this 16th day of August, 2018. Mr. Chairman, I so move.
All right, Commissioner P. Any questions regarding this? If not, then please cast your votes. Mr. P's device is not properly working there.
So we should record the vote and note that he... Okay.
There you go. Thank you.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the votes, please.
Twenty-one yes. Motion passes.
Item J-1D, Highway Fund Budgets Amendment. Resolution, be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners, that the Highway Fund be amended as follows. Capital projects, increase expenditures, highway equipment, $350,000. Decrease assigned fund balance, $350,000. This is for a new 10-foot paver from the new paving with. Resolve this 16th day of August, 2018. Mr. Chairman, I so move.
Second, Commissioner Dodd. Any questions, discussion? If not, then please cast your votes.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the votes, please.
Twenty-one yes. Motion passes.
Mr. Jordan, would you like to say anything in your parting remarks?
As long as I'm up here for my last... My last moment of fame, I guess, in front of the TV screen, I'll say that in my 16 years, it's been an honor and a privilege to serve the people in District III. I did the rough math, and I've been to something over 1,300 meetings these last 16 years. That's a lot of meetings. And it's amazing how little I knew when I got here. When I was elected 16 years ago, I was coming up here to fix everything. I didn't know squat. I mean, I've learned so much these last 16 years. I'm not the same person I was, and I just want to say thanks to all of you all, especially this man behind me, and all the constituents out there for putting up for me. It's been a great ride. I'm going to miss it. Good luck to all of you. And according to Lisa Nolan, the county's in better financial shape than it's been in many, many decades. So if y'all mess it up, it's not on some of us that aren't going to be here anymore. So y'all keep it up.
All right.[881.12][881.12](Applause). And we're going to let our Finance Director, Ms. Nolan, tell you about the results of the... We sold bonds...
We sold...
...Tuesday, and she's going to give you the good news on that, so...
Yes, we had 14 firms bid on this issue. We ended up borrowing 40 million 680, I think, is what we... What the numbers went down to because of a premium that they were offering. But the true interest cost that was awarded was to Robert W. Baird &amp; Company at 3.0535. The next bid was 30550. They were tight.
Very, very competitive bids there, and good bids. And the Robert Baird Company also teamed up with about 18 other brokerage firms in a combination bid there, so that was... We had a lot of interest from over 30 different entities across the country that were bidding on those bonds. All right, thank you very much again there, Lisa. All right, so we're moving along a little quicker than we anticipated here, but that's a good thing, isn't it? Mayor Burgess. Mr. Phillips?
Thank you. The agenda item that's been added under Other Business, the Fireworks Ordinance, closely relates to what our planning department does, and our planning department will be up making some presentations and for rezonings here in a minute, and I would move that we move that fireworks ordinance up on the agenda item and to right now.
If there's no objections, we can certainly do that. Now, I need to ask just one question. We have now put on the SharePoint Devices the appropriate resolution. Is that... I mean, rights code. I had the correct one, and you people, we... From the January... From the June 14th meeting, we knew which one should be there, but somehow the other one got placed there, an earlier version. So now, if you look at your devices there, you'll see that item J dot 6 dot C, which was on the June 14th agenda, which we never had a motion. This came from steering without a recommendation. It was put on the commission agenda, and the commission had not had enough time to review this, and no motion was ever made. So we did not have a motion. Excuse me, Mr. Gurley.
Yes, my... I'll pass the... That's one who was just earlier.
Okay, so pass out the copies, then, the hard copies. Somehow they went down and tried to correct that, and I apologize. I thought that it had actually done that. So without objection, we're going to let this discussion take place now. We've got a bit of time before 6:30. ordinance, in their hand? All right, assuming that's correct, I've already told you that there was not a motion addressed to accept that resolution from the actual steering committee, and no motion was made at the June 14th meeting. All that being said, there was a motion by Mr. Phillips and a second by Mr. Johnson to delay that discussion regarding this fireworks ordinance until the August commission meeting. So that's what this is about, and that's why we place this under any other business, and now we can address that. Now, I'm going to tell you before we start in this discussion that we need a motion on the floor before we can have the discussion. So I'm going to ask you, those of you that are concerned about this and want to get this passed, to get a motion properly seconded on the floor, and then you can discuss this. So is there a motion to accept this fireworks ordinance that's been presented before you? Mr. Kusch?
Yes, Chairman. Yes, thank you. I do make a motion to accept this hand-passed-out ordinance that, in its entirety, that we'll discuss this evening. So yes, I make a motion to accept this ordinance.
Is there a second? Mr. Jernigan. Now, Mr. P.
Since I'm looking at two different ordinances, just on Section 1.2 jurisdiction, read to me, if you don't mind, Commissioner Kusch, what the ordinance you just made a motion to pass has on it.
The one on your iPad is null and void. All right. The one that's passed out jurisdiction, the ordinance shall be... Shall apply to all platted subdivisions within the unincorporated areas of Rutherford County. So that's what we're debating.
Is that clear with... By everyone now? So that sentence was the one that was inappropriate on the one that was... Had been placed on your iPads earlier. Mrs. Allen.
I've served on the Planning Commission for a long time, and so I guess my question is, platted subdivision. So are we talking about any parcel smaller than five acres? Because if Daddy's got 15 acres and he gives me two, I've got a platted subdivision, or I've got a parcel that's been platted, so Daddy can shoot fireworks and I can't? I'm just not clear on enforcement.
Can we... If it's all right, can we ask our planning director to give us his professional definition of what is a platted subdivision?
A platted subdivision, Ms. Allen, as you said, would pretty much be anything under five acres. Now, there are some situations as well with acreage tracts that are on private easements, as you're aware, that we deal with those occasionally. Those can be over five acres if they're on private easements, if there's multiple lots on a private easement over five acres. That would also be considered a platted subdivision. Sometimes, if there is a new road, infrastructure, or anything like that being built, there are some subdivisions in the county that have subdivision, their actual subdivision, but they're all lots of over five acres, even though they're on a public right-of-way, because new right-of-way was constructed for that. Generally speaking, anything under five acres is a subdivision, but there are exceptions to that.
So how are we going to enforce this? How's somebody going to know if they can shoot fireworks, or they can't, or their neighbor can, or they can't? And then, when they call to make the complaint, who they calling? Who's showing up? How's it going to be enforced?
Right. Well, something like this, of course, if there's ever any question about whether or not an ordinance applies, they can always call our office. They can call Building Codes to discuss these kind of things. I'm sorry?
They'll call you during the day.
Yes, ma'am.
While the fireworks are going off at night.
Right, right. Now, for the zoning enforcement side of things, yes, that'd be a daytime issue. I mean, there is always the possibility of calling the sheriff's office during the evening. Now, we've had a lot of discussions about that particular situation, about how enforcement might work in that situation. So there... We have considered that.
You may not be the person to answer that, but I guess that's my question. Are we now going to be using sheriff deputies to enforce this ordinance?
No, I think that's... If you read this more carefully, that's not the case.
Right.
And if you would allow Ms. Bell to come here, she probably can answer that specific question, not so much about the platted subdivision, but about the enforcement process. So I think... You have to read Section 4 carefully, and she can interpret that a bit for you, I believe.
Good evening, Commissioner Allen. Yes, the sheriff's department can be called and can be notified. We will accept a report or a complaint from the sheriff's department to establish or to initiate a complaint through the Building Codes Department.
But they are not going to be the enforcing agency. I mean, go ahead and explain the rest of it. What will happen once you get this complaint?
We will then investigate the complaint, and we will use a combination of the sheriff's department's complaints... Excuse me, reports, complaints from the neighbors, statements from the neighbors, or whoever the complainant is that's complaining, and we will determine, or the investigating officer from my office will determine whether a violation actually exists.
And then you will do what? If you think a violation did occur, you will do...
The first... Right. The first violation, if we establish that a violation actually exists, a written warning will be issued for the initial warning. The second time, it would be a $50 fine.
So I get a shame on you the first time, and then I get a $50 fine the second time?
Right.
Mr. Gurley, I think, was next. Mr. Kusch, but if you would... That's okay. Now, Mr. Gurley, do you have additional questions? You rose a moment ago, or did we answer some of those through this discussion?
Well, I was just going to comment. Of course, the last few years, I've been... I was annexed into the town of Smyrna, so the county... I go by their rules now. But part of that, I had a platted subdivision. It actually says on the plat... Gurley subdivision. But it was out of 200 and some odd acres. The one really around to bother me, but... So I would be technically a platted subdivision that couldn't shoot fireworks, except at this time, but yet I had nobody around. Which, like I said, now, it applies... The town of Smyrna's ordinances applies, which is even more restrictive of this, but I think probably in the more rural areas of this county, we have a lot of areas that are like that. I think we need to put some kind of density thing in this platted subdivision. X number of houses per acre, or something or another. Whereas, really and truly, we're looking at a true dense residential subdivision where people live close to each other and so on. I don't know that platted subdivision really defines what we want to stop. We want to stop from when people live right next to each other, and someone's shooting fireworks off at all kinds of hours, and their neighbors are 10 feet away, then it... Yes, it bothers them, but if their neighbors are still several hundred or 1,000 feet away, it's not necessarily an issue. So I'm not sure how to do that, either by an appropriate amendment or something. I'll let some of my other commissioners speak prior to that, but that is concern with me.
Now, Mr. Demossi, were you willing to respond to anything he was saying there?
No, sir, not at this point. I thought maybe he was going to ask a question, so when he started talking about platted subdivisions, that's...
Okay. Mr. Kusch?
We currently have a noise ordinance in the county, and every time my constituents call about it, the sheriff's department will say, "No, we don't have a noise ordinance. There's nothing they can do." They call the Building Codes Enforcement. "No, we don't have a noise ordinance. Nothing we can do." So my question is, if the sheriff's department is not going to make a report on our current noise ordinance, what makes we think that they're going to make a report on this ordinance?
They will not actually do a report. If the complaint... They will be told the evening of the complaint, or when they're caught... They call the complaint in, they will be told that they need to follow up with the Building Codes Department in the next business day. We will then contact the sheriff's department and get a copy of the report to use it as a piece of information to corroborate or to verify whether a violation existed.
That was... The sheriff's department currently does with the current noise ordinance?
No, they don't.
Why?
They just tell them to call us.
Just call us, and then nothing happens?
Right. We don't get...
I would like to make a motion that at the next Public Works meeting, that the Public Works Committee reviews the noise ordinance and make a determination who's going to be called, because my constituents call the only two people they know, and they know nothing about it. So I'll make a motion that at the next Public Works Committee meeting, that that committee reviews and study our current noise ordinance.
Second, Commissioner McAdoo. Now, we have a motion on the floor, but you're making a motion to delay action on this motion that's...
No, I'll just make an amendment to this motion, if that's appropriate.
Okay.
Or we can take care of this motion, and I can come back and make a new motion. I always... I always rile this motion if I can make another one at the end of this motion.
Okay. All right, so Mr.... Both of them have withdrawn. Mr. Jordan?
Well, I kind of liked where I thought Trey was going, and not because I'm trying to get out of anything, because I won't be here next month, but these two ought to go hand in hand in my opinion. But, these two ought to go hand in hand, in my opinion, that a noise ordinance and a fireworks ordinance ought to be almost combined into one, and I would think they ought to come together, come through together. And I'm a little worried about sending a deputy out. These fireworks problems are in the middle of the night, you know? Very seldom you have a problem with somebody shooting fireworks at 2:00 and after midnight. It's always midnight or whatever, and codes enforcement people are not there at that point. There's some deputy out there in some country road, and he doesn't know if somebody's got four acres and it's platted, or 5.01, it's not platted. It's going to be a lot of gray area. I hate to put those deputies in that position. I think we ought to let this go back and all this come through at one time, and, and do fireworks and noise all in one, or at least companion agreements at once, and try and get this correct, because I don't want to put our deputies in a, in a bad place going forward, not knowing what they're dealing with. And I'll make a motion to defer this until it can come to Public Works along with the noise ordinance.
Second, Mr. Gooch. So, the original motion has been amended, a motion to amend that, to defer this action until we bring both the fireworks and the noise ordinance back concurrently. Is that clear to you, Mr. Gooch, that what we're trying to do here?
It is clear, but I don't like it.
Okay, so, we, that amendment's on the floor now, so you can now address that.
We...
What's the time limit on the deferral?
Until they come through the process with the, the next month's Public Works and back this next month.
A one-month deferral?
Yeah, back through the Public Works and back.
All right. For clarification, let me ask you, is Public Works the right committee? Shouldn't, planning has always done noise ordinance?
But we don't have a planning committee, but planning reports...
Oh, yeah, it's part, yeah.
And Building Codes is part of the Public Works reporting process.
Right, okay.
So, that is the proper committee.
Right.
Further discussion, Commissioner Schaefer?
Didn't we about eight, 10 years ago, something like that, go through something very similar, and that was with guns being shot in platted subdivisions? And, you know, some of them, because they have rocks behind them, I won't hit you, but they have rocks behind, and it could ricochet off and all that. And it wound up getting dropped, because we had the noise ordinance, and if it was a nuisance and a safety hazard, you could call the sheriff's office, and that's why it was dropped, and it didn't go any further. And we kicked it around for several months, if I remember, back when that came up. And this sounds like the same thing to me, so I definitely agree, let's get it all taken care of together.
Well, that, that was the effort to start with here. I'll just tell you that, they discussed the noise ordinance in a comprehensive kind of way, and were unable to address that in complete totality. Mr. Phillips?
I've tried to shut up, but I just can't. The fireworks ordinance went through the Planning Commission years ago, maybe eight years ago, passed overwhelmingly at the Planning Commission, came before this county commission and died. It was brought back before the Planning Commission a couple of months ago, and as chairman of the Planning Commission, I didn't, I wouldn't hear it, because I'm not going to spend months discussing an ordinance, bring it back to this commission, and this commission throw it out again. So, my suggestion was to bring the ordinance to this committee, this commission, and see if they wanted the Planning Commission to address it. And now, we're circumventing that. I got a little problem with that, taking it back to the Planning Commission or any other committee without some guidance as to how we feel as a commission about that. You guys know what brought this up. The fireworks can be shot off any day, any hour of the year, anytime, and we're building 200 to 400-unit subdivisions in this county, and some of them are 15-foot apart. And if there is not an ordinance, you can do anything you want to do. And the idea, I think, that Mr. Kush had, was just to protect those subdivisions, not farmland, not large tracts of land, but just those subdivisions, so some of those folks could get some peace and quiet sometimes. Does it happen often? No, but it does happen, and that's the reason we got the complaints initially. So, to take it back to a committee, it's fine and dandy, and I'll vote for that, but I would like some idea from this commission as to how you feel about it. If you're going to vote no on it, don't waste the committee's time, don't waste the Planning Commission's time putting all that work into it. This county has grown up, almost every month, when we have a, some type of rezoning that's going on, some of the neighbors come in and complain about it. 10 years ago, I moved out here to be in the country, and it's all I can do not to say there is no country anymore in Rutherford County. Wait 20 years, and there surely won't be. And that's the only purpose of this fireworks ordinance, is to provide some protection for those platted subdivisions that are out there. Doesn't restrict from selling or buying during New Year's, during 4th of July, is there something else there, Mike, that I'm missing? New Year's and 4th of July, they can do it all they want to, sell and buy either one. But it would restrict unless someone had a special event, and they can make application and get that permit to shoot off those fireworks at any other time. So, all this is, in my mind, is to project, protect the great majority of citizens in this county. All it affects is platted subdivisions. I don't care whether it's a five-acre track or less, it's a platted subdivision, and it should be, all of those platted subdivisions should be treated the same, in my mind. How do you separate them? How do you determine yes or no on one of them? But anyway, long story short, is that this was discussed a number of years ago, a good long while ago, Doug, and the Planning Commission worked months on it, sent it to this commission, the Planning Commission approved it, sent it to the commission for discussion, and it was turned down overwhelmingly. And I just don't want that to happen again. My time is too valuable, the time of our planning commissioners are too valuable, to be spending lots of time on this when, if this commission is not interested in it, just tell us, we're not interested in it, and it won't go any further. And that's what... As to what you want us to do, do you want us to look at a, an ordinance or not? And this ordinance that here, that tonight, is not the final ordinance, but it's just guidelines that I think the Planning Commission would look at to start with.
Mr. Schaefer?
It's 6:40, so we, we're past the public hearing at 6:30. So, when we come back to this, I would like to be the first one to speak. I'll give him something definite.
Mr. Chairman, you've got a motion and a second on the floor.
Well, somebody called, we have a motion and an amendment?
I do have one question. We won't have a Public Works Committee next month, because there won't be a Public Works Committee until September 14th, when the new committees are assigned. So, it probably would be better to have it deferred two months, until the Public Works Committee can meet.
Okay, we, we don't... Okay.
Without waiting off too much, I agree with everything Commissioner Phillips said. You fixed to have five new commissioners up here. If it goes to Public Works whenever the appropriate time is, it can circle back in full commission, if they, and blessed, it can go to planning to actually be drawn up at that point in time. But, I mean, you're talking about what are the wishes of the commission? Well, five of us are, are gone, you know? And others, mostly sitting in the audience, I guess you get to raise their hands, but, but besides that, you know, I just think it's be more appropriate to go back and, and come through.
Well, we have to set a definite deferral date, so...
And to the next Public Works meeting, whenever that happens to be.
Okay. Is that okay with the person who made that, the second of that motion, of the amendment? If there's no further discussion, if you're not going to call for a question, I'm going to call for the vote, and we'll be done with this. Any other discussion? If not, please cast your votes on the amendment, which means the amendment now is going to send this back to the next Public Works meeting. And Mr. Jernigan, punch your device again, please, sir. Thank you.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the votes.
19 yes, 2 no, motion passes.
So, the amendment has passed, now we need to vote on the original motion in its form, in its amended form. So, all of you in favor of that, please say aye. Board of board, go ahead, Mr. P. Okay, so that, that just trumped all of that? Okay. Thank you, so we don't need to do anything else? That's good catch. Okay. All right. Sorry, we apologize to those of you that are here to hear these rezoning requests. So, Mr. Demossi will come forward. The first rezoning request is 18-A012, on behalf of Ryan and Jackie Reed. Property located at 4440 Sulfur Springs Road, existing zoning is residential medium density. Proposed zoning is commercial services on a site of about four acres. Tell us a bit more about that, Mr. Demossi.
Yes, Mayor Burgess, thank you, and hello again, commissioners. Hope everybody's having a good evening. Information provided by the applicant indicates they'd like to develop this property that's before us for this public hearing to encompass up to three commercial units, which would offer retail and/or office space. All existing structures on the property would be removed. There is a concept plan that has been included with the agenda packets, which you can find on your iPads. This is not a PUD application, Plan Development, so the concept plan is not binding, just as an aside. The way that the concept plan is shown right now would probably require several changes to it, just because there's several zoning issues that would arise with it if it were approved in its current condition. A portion of this property, about a half acre, was zoned commercial back from, in 1973, when it was originally zoned agricultural. This half-acre site actually was the area of an old market. The building still remains on the property today. The balance of the property was zoned agricultural, and then was zoned R15 under the previous zoning resolution. The entire property was zoned RM when we went through the comprehensive rezoning back in 2013, due to the fact that the store had been unoccupied for a number of years. Due to the time elapsed, the grandfathering status of that store has long since lapsed. This property is located immediately to the west of the existing Dollar General on Leanna Road. There's also an approved site plan for a self-storage facility to the east of this property, as well, located along Leanna Central Valley Road. One of the biggest issues that was discussed during this rezoning really had to do with access to the property. This property, as you can see, is located near the intersection of Leanna Road and Sulfur Springs Road. Improvements have been made to that intersection, however, there are still some issues with it. Staff has spoken with the applicant, as well as the developer of the property, immediately adjacent to it, which, incidentally, we'll consider here in just a few minutes, about the possibility of sharing access. Staff would also like to see the existing parking and open access in front of the store upon redevelopment just be eliminated, just for a little bit safer situation. But however, if this application would be approved, then we would explore those issues through a site plan review. Landscaping, buffering, performance standards, and everything would also be considered at that time. As I stated a moment ago, most of the discussion at the Planning Commission did center on traffic in the area, and about the improvements to the intersection of Leanna Road and Sulfur Springs Road. Following the public hearing, the Planning Commission did recommend approval by a unanimous vote, and I will be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Demossi? If not, then we will declare the public hearing open with respect to rezoning request 18-A012. If there are any that wish to speak for or against this particular request, now is your opportunity to come forward. So, those of you that wish to speak, the public hearing is now open. Come forward with your comments. All right, we have no one rising to come forward, so the public hearing is closed. Do we have a motion on this, Commissioner Jordan?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve subject to all staff comments.
Second, Commissioner P. Any further comments? All right, all of you in favor of that, then, please say aye. Any opposed? Thank you very much. Next is rezoning request 18-A013, on behalf of Kenneth and Janet Harris. Property at 305 Double Springs Road, existing zoning is agricultural residential. Proposed zoning is commercial general on a site of about 10 acres. Mr. Demossi, please.
Yes, Mayor Burgess, thank you. The applicant's proposing to zone this property commercial general for a possible event venue. A concept plan, again, has been provided with your agenda materials located on your iPad. The plan calls for a 40,000-square-foot building and parking area. Event venues, or retreats, as we call them, are classified as minimal-impact facilities, and the zoning ordinance are, and are only allowed in this zone by special exception, which means that even if this is approved, that is the use that he ends up going with, he would have to go to the Board of Zoning Appeals for a special approval for that. There is an existing single-family structure on the property. Zoning this property to commercial general would render this as a non-conforming use, because residential uses are not allowed in the commercial general zone. As long as the use is not discontinued for longer than 30 months, it can continue based on our regulations. If the use were to be discontinued for longer than 30 months, or if the property were to be redeveloped, then it would lose its grandfathering status at that time. Access to the property is from Double Springs Road, although there is an existing access point also to John Bragg Highway. Anything that we would see from a site plan standpoint should just be approved, would have to be submitted and reviewed based on the regulations that we have currently in effect, and that goes for landscaping as well as the performance standards. There was very little discussion on this item at the Planning Commission's meeting. The property right adjacent to it, I guess that would be to the, kind of the north-northwest, was zoned commercial general just within the last year as well. So, with that, after the public hearing, the Planning Commission did recommend approval, again, by a unanimous vote, and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions of Mr. Demossi? All right, there being none, then we will declare the public hearing for rezoning request 18-A013 open for those that wish to speak for or against this proposal. If there's anyone wishing to speak, now is your opportunity to come forward. Again, there's no one wishing to speak, therefore, the public hearing is closed. And do we have a motion concerning this request? Mr. Serino? Mr. Reno moves for approval. Do we have a second? Commissioner Dodd? Any further discussion? All of you, then, in favor of that, please say aye. Any opposed? Thank you very much. Next is rezoning request 18-A014. Mr. Clyde Roundtree of Huddleston Steel Engineering, for Donna Cook, located at 4450 Sulfur Springs Road, existing zoning is residential medium density and commercial services, and the proposed zoning is commercial services on approximately 0.83 acres, and residential medium density on approximately 1.23 acres. Mr. Demossi?
Yes, Mayor Burgess, thank you. You'll see that there is, this is on your iPads as well, but behind me, you'll see that there's a diagram. It'll be a lot easier for me to just point it out on this and try to explain it, just reading what I've written on my staff report. When this property was zoned originally back in December of 2017, and if you can see the laser pointer here, this was the area right here that was actually zoned to commercial services. Now, this property, again, this is the intersection of Sulfur Springs Road and Leanna Road right in this area. This is just adjacent to the property, we considered a little earlier on the agenda. Now, what ended up happening, we saw a site plan come through for this property here, but as you can see, they were looking to use all of this property, not all of this over here. So, this portion of the property, which they wish to use commercially, is actually still zoned residential. So, basically, what they're doing is a little bit of a zoning flip-flop, if you will. What they're doing is, they're taking this portion, the yellow here, they're zoning that from commercial services to RM, but that, which is what it was originally zoned, and this portion here, which is zoned RM, they're zoning commercial services to be consistent with the site plan that was submitted to our office. That site plan has not been approved yet, just due to the fact that there were issues, we didn't want to have a dual-zone property like that with a site plan, it just makes a mess. So, I hope that was clear, the explanation I tried to give at Public Works, I don't think was anywhere near that concise, but I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Doug, I know that TBA right-of-way is shown right there, goes right through the back part of the property, and I know the county's not involved in, you know, enforcing other people's right-of-ways, but we are making sure that there's no structures being built in that, are we not?
Correct, yes. The, the site plan that they submitted originally didn't show any structures there, but yes.
Other questions of Mr. Demossi? Okay, then, we will declare the public hearing open for rezoning request 18-A014. open for rezoning request eighteen dash A zero fourteen. Those of you that wish to speak for or against this request, now is your opportunity. Please come forward. Okay, again, no one is wishing to speak, so therefore the public hearing is closed. And do we have a motion? Commissioner Jordan?
Chairman, I make a motion to approve subject all staff comments.
And second, Commissioner P. and others. Further discussion? All right, all of you in favor of that, then, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you very much. All right. So we're ready to come back to our normal agenda here, so let's, we have an item under Steering Legislative and Governmental Committee. Commissioner Gooch, a resolution regarding committees' compensation.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Fellow Commissioners, Steering does have one resolution for your consideration this evening. Whereas committee compensation has not been adjusted in approximately twenty years for any Rutherford County committee, and whereas a public billing authority cannot be compensated pursuant to Tennessee Code Annotated, and whereas the Archives Committee compensation is currently set at twenty-five dollars per meeting and cannot be increased pursuant to Tennessee Code Annotated, and where it is in the best interest of the citizens of Rutherford County to increase compensation for members of certain Rutherford County committees. Now therefore, it will be resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the following committee compensation shall be increased by fifty dollars per meeting. Commissioners, you will see a list of committees and boards with the old pay rate and then the new pay rate, and I'll resolve this the sixteenth day of August 2018. Mr. Chair?
And we have a second from Commissioner Turner. Now, discussion?
Yes.
Mr. Gurley?
I have a question for our county attorney. I serve on one of these boards that's on this list, and I'm sure there are other commission members. How appropriate is it for us to pass our pay raise for ourselves? And if so, if we do, is this going to go in effect during our current terms or another term, or what? Can you enlighten me on that?
That's a good question. The resolution as written does not have a future effective date, so I assume it goes into effect now. In terms of your ability to vote on your own pay raise to the extent you're on some of these committees, the conflict statute that was amended, I'm having to think about it for a minute because I didn't anticipate you asking this question, was amended and provides, I don't think it addresses this directly. And so I would suggest to those of you that are on any of these committees where your pay may be increased, it might be wise to abstain from voting and just avoid a potential conflict with it. Having said that, the new conflict statute deals more generally with budget, passing budgets and passing resolutions that are specific that would increase pay for you if you're an employee. This is kind of employment, but it's really sitting on a board. But having said that, I think applying that statute naturally, it would probably make sense to abstain if you're on one of these committees, and it will increase your pay.
If you will recall, though, when the commission voted twenty years ago, all the commissioners voted, so there was obviously no conflict of interest at that point.
Okay, so we have a motion. A second. Are there other comments? Commissioner Stevens?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. If everybody that's on one of the committees abstains, there won't even be a majority vote. I mean...
Yeah, one possibility, I'm going to interrupt you, Mr. Stevens, would be to clearly articulate that the effective date is September one. It's not in the resolution that way, but I do think if you make it September one, you're voting on the compensation for a new commission, and that, I think, would resolve this. But someone's going to need to amend the document in front of you to account for that.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Turner?
I'll make the motion to make the amendment to make this effective September one, 2018, with the new commission.
Since the motion was made by Mr. Gooch, does Mr. Gooch need to be the one to initiate the amendment to make this effective, add the effective date of September the first?
I don't, I don't think that the person who made the motion can do an amendment.
There already a second on the amendment, on the motion?
Yeah, we have a second. We do have a second on the...
Then he can, he can make a motion to amend.
Okay, so you're going to make a motion to amend, all right. And a second by Mr. Stevens, then. Now, further discussion or questions? The motion is on the floor now to be amended, that the, we add the effective date of this resolution as September the first.
Were we voting for the amendment only at this time?
Only, yes, and then we'll... All right. Please cast your votes.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the votes.
Twenty yes, one abstain. Motion passes.
All right, now it's, is necessary for us this time to vote on the motion as amended. Yes, sir. Commissioner Phillips?
Another amendment? And it's rather lengthy and rather complicated, and I would, I would like to approach the podium.
Yes, I'll sit down for you. All right, so then please come forward. And do you have this written out, Mr. Phillips?
I do.
So you can hand that to our clerk here, then, so we can get this properly recorded at some point.
This is an amendment that is requiring a significant change to the motion that was on the floor. And after I make the motion to amend, and if we get a second, there are some statistics that I would like to present at that time to support the motion. Here's the motion. I move that the motion on the floor be amended to also increase the per diem for county commissioners at their regular meetings to five hundred dollars a month, and all county commission, committee meetings to two hundred and fifty dollars a month beginning September one, 2018, and that the Rutherford County Board of Education and Rutherford County Highway Commission per diems be increased accordingly as required by law based on pay for county commissioners. That the Rutherford County Election Commission per diem be increased to two fifty for its monthly meetings and one hundred and twenty-five dollars for additional meetings within the month. That the general fund be amended as follows. Decrease unassigned fund balance by one hundred and forty-three thousand, five hundred and five dollars for per diem and related benefits. That the road and bridge fund be amended as follows. Decrease assigned for highway by eighteen thousand, ninety dollars for per diem and related benefits, and that the general purpose school fund be amended as follows. Decrease unassigned fund balance by sixty-four thousand, eight hundred and ten dollars for per diem and related benefits, and that the Rutherford County Commission recommends approval of these budget amendments to the road and bridge fund and general purpose school funds pending approval of their respective boards. I've given this a lot of thought, and I've talked to...
Now, Mr. Phillips, if we could get a second on that, then we can, you can engage in this discussion, I believe it would be better. Do we have a second to that motion?
I have a second.
Mr. Jordan? All right, continue on, then, sir.
Here's a spreadsheet that I'll pass out with all of the current commissioners and committee compensation. And while that's being passed out, once again, I've given this a lot of thought, and if you all will try to recall, the county commission compensation has not been increased in twenty years. And I'm not a hundred percent sure, but I think it may have been twenty years before that. And why am I bringing this up tonight? Because it has to be brought up tonight or not at all. It has to be put into effect before the new commission is seated, the way I understand the law. I've looked, I called Doug Broderie from C Task, and Doug has done some work and sent us a spreadsheet listing all ninety-five counties. I should say ninety-four counties because they excluded Davison County. And I pulled out Williamson County as an example. Williamson County, the commissioners paid six hundred and fifteen dollars a month. Wilson County, eight hundred and forty, eight hundred and fifty-four dollars a month. Sumner County, five hundred dollars. Robertson County, four hundred dollars. Cheatham County, four hundred and sixty dollars. Sullivan County, six hundred and fifty dollars a month. Two of those commissions also get benefits. If you look at Hamilton County, which is third as far as population, they're drawing a little over nineteen hundred dollars a month plus benefits. Take the ninety-four counties, fifty-one of them pay their commissioners not only salary but benefits as well. I've looked at the top ten population, I excluded Davison County. Rutherford County ranks number four in the state as far as population. Of those top ten, Rutherford County ranks dead last as far as what we pay our elected officials, county commissioners, school board, and associated committees. Dead last. And that's jumped out at me. It really did. This amendment, it looks like it adds one hundred and forty-three thousand, five hundred and five dollars to the budget. And if you look at our total budget of a little over six hundred and one million dollars, there's three zeros before you get to a number. That's zero, 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 two, three. So I think that's a little over two tenths of one percent that this would add to the county budget. So from my perspective, and I've been up here a long time, I think it's time to do it. And that's the reason that I'm making this motion. I know it's a tough decision for a lot of people, and my thought process was, if we're going to do it, we need to do it now. We can't wait until next month, or next year, or the year after. It has to be done now and needs to be done now. And that's the reason that I brought it up tonight. So I approached this with some mixed emotions, but the more I looked at it, the more I'm convinced that our county has grown to the point where we need to better compensate our committees. If you look at that spreadsheet and up at the top, on the first side, the county commission would increase two hundred dollars a month plus a hundred dollars for each committee meeting. The archive committee would increase fifty bucks. The election commission would only increase a hundred bucks. The highway department, two hundred dollars, and they're elected. The board of education would raise two hundred dollars a month plus one hundred dollars for each and additional meeting, and they're also elected. The board of equalization, fifty dollars. Audit committee, fifty dollars. The planning and engineering, the BZA and the planning commission would be fifty dollars. The workhouse board, fifty. Building codes, fifty. Recreation, fifty. Agricultural, fifty. Insurance committee, fifty. And the beer board, fifty. So those are the increases that I'm talking about. And once again, I'm not saying that this is something that has to be done, but I really do think that it's something that needs to be done, and now is the time to do it. So with that, I'll, will once again try my best to answer any questions. I spent a little time with Lisa, and she could probably help answer any of your questions that you may have.
All right. So I guess just sort of stand by right here with us, Mr. Phillips, and see if we have some questions or further discussion. Mr. McAdoo?
I got one question. I know the other night we included PBA board. I don't see it on here.
By state statute, the PBA is not allowed to be compensated. The Industrial Development Board, they do that on their own initiative. That's not funded through this body. Sir?
How much are they doing?
How much are they? I don't know what they pay themselves. I mean, they don't bring that before us, but we can find out. On the IDB, is that what you're suggesting? Yes, I don't know.
Another thing I noticed that the commissioner was talking about, Hamilton County. Hamilton County and Rutherford County population is, I think, is close now. I'm not for sure. Can anybody tell me what...
They're probably thirty thousand to forty thousand more than we are, but we're gaining ground.
Gaining ground quick, and they're looking at nineteen hundred a month, and we're, plus benefits, and we're only looking at five hundred, so that's something you commissioners need to keep in mind.
Mr. Jordan?
I've been up way too much talking tonight, but my last time, I guess I can do that. This is uncomfortable to vote for. It won't affect five of us that are leaving, but I agree it's the right thing to do. It's a substantial percentage increase, but if you're only going to do it every twenty years, then you've got to do a substantial percentage increase. I mean, I would love to see some sort of cost per living or something, but that, you know, a little late in the game. I'll be trying to figure that out right now. I just urge everybody to vote for this. I know a lot of you are probably going to say I don't want to vote on my own pay, but you're also doing it for the commissioners to come after you, because I doubt this will get brought up again for another twenty years. And in twenty years, there'll probably be a whole different group of people here, and it is the only time it could be addressed, and I would just urge everybody to vote for this because it just needs to be addressed. And maybe it'll get addressed in ten years instead of twenty, again, it could be a smaller percentage, but I think it's the right thing to do.
Other comments? Now, let me review this. Mr. Commissioner Phillips, you made an amendment to add this particular component to the motion that we currently have on the floor. Is that...
Yes. I'm sorry, I didn't believe you'd move them.
All right, so let's, let me see that just a moment here, please. All right, so the motion is to move that the motion on the floor be amended to also increase the per diem of the county commissioners and those others that he has listed here, the Rutherford County Board of Education, the highway commission, et cetera, with the proper amendments being made, and those amendments have been prepared by Mrs. Nolan, and she has passed those out for your review if you need to refer to those. So is the motion to amend, is that clear to you? That's what we're going to be voting on first? Are you ready to vote? If you're ready to vote, please cast your votes.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
All right, please record the votes.
Eighteen yes, two no, one abstain. Amendment passes.
Amendment has passed. Now it'll be necessary for us to vote on the initial motion as amended. Are there any more discussion regarding that? If not, then let's, please cast your votes.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record those votes, please.
Seventeen yes, two no, two abstain. Motion passes.
All right. So that finishes all the business that we have listed on our agenda. Is there any other business anyone wishes to bring before us? Commissioner P.
There is a Country Hand Breakfast this coming Saturday, the eighteenth, between six and ten, at the Kittrelle Volunteer Fire Department. We'd like to invite everybody out. 10:00, at the Kitchell Volunteer Fire Department, we'd like to invite everybody out.
Commissioner Allen?
There is a barbecue at the Depot District, it's a competition, and so there's gonna be music, games, and barbecue. It'll be Saturday night, from 6:00 to 9:00 p.m.
All right, there are a few other things I want to say to you here, and I don't know in what particular order we're going to say them, but you have your name, those of you that are being, leaving this body after tonight, you have before you those nameplates that are sitting there, you're welcome to take those with you. And we will get a ladder, so I'm told by Mr. Robertson, and we'll take your name off this tote board up here, and you can take that nameplate home with you as well after the meeting, if you want it. So you'll have to let us know about that. And do we have a ladder that's available tonight, Brian?
Yes, it's in the wings there.
All right, and we're gonna give all of you that want to say anything in parting here, an opportunity, but I'll take first pass at this and say, thank every single one of you for being a tremendous part of this team that's worked together so very, very well, and many of you for even the whole 12 years that I've been here. So thank you, and I want to publicly thank all of citizens of Rutherford County for an opportunity to serve and do what we can to make this county better, and I think we've done a pretty reasonable job doing that, and we're just so thankful that we've been able to do that. There are all kinds of staff members that I want to say thank you to, and of course we've already mentioned Lisa, and Mark, and all of the team there. Every department is well, well represented, and I think we've got some tremendous department heads at every level. So Brian is here, our other elected officials are here, of course, our clerk is with us, and her chief assistant here, Mr. Spence, so all of us, this has been a great journey together, and we've learned a lot, and we've still have a few things to yet learn perfectly, but we'll never be a perfect person. So there are a few other things I want to say, and we're gonna let Mr. Phillips in a moment introduce our new commissioners that are coming forward, but we're going to, those four of you that are not being, coming back with us, well, really five that's not coming back, but Ms. Ely is already retired from this body once, but she came back graciously and served the balance of return that needed to be served there. So we thank each of you four people, and I'm gonna come out there in just a moment and give you a little something you can take with you. And I'm gonna ask a person that's been really, really special to me every single day, all day, 365 days a year, Ms. Taylor is our executive assistant to the mayor, and she's, I don't know how many mayors she's done before me, but it's more than 30 years she's been the executive assistant to the mayors that's been sitting in that office. So we've got a few, just for the four of you that are actually stepping aside this particular year, Joyce, you've already gotten your plaque before, so please forgive us you're not getting another one. So I'm gonna take just a moment to come down to the front and let Ms. Taylor come up here, and I'm gonna let her hand out these little mementos that will recognize your contribution for these many years you've served us.
Okay.
16 years.
16 years on the budget committee, the last, how many years as chairperson since oh?
Four years since Ms. Ely had it, previous, I don't know, eight years?
12, she had it 12 years. Thank you for a great job, we appreciate it.
All right, Mr. Doug Schaefer, come on over here, a little bit closer where they can hear us on. Mr. Schaefer, it's been a joy to serve with you. You've been on that public safety committee the whole 16 years?
Not quite.
Not quite?
Back at the beginning.
Back at the beginning, but he's been chairperson of the public safety for four years now, so it's been a joy, and we've gone through some difficult assignments, but...
Put it mildly.
To put it mildly, but you've done a great job, and we just want to say thank you so very, very much. Wish you the best. Good luck. Do you want to, listen, Will's already had his opportunity, do you want to say anything?
It won't be as long as Will's, but I do want to say, it's been 16 good years, the county is in great shape right at the moment, so I echo what Will said about the rest. You all that are gonna be here, I am proud of what, how we've worked with education. We have one of the very top school systems in the state, and I'm proud of that, and all three of my kids graduated from here, and they all went to MTSU, so they're definitely all county, and they're all doing well in the world. But also, I was happy to be here, we've done a lot of things. I hope you all have better success with our legislative delegation on unfunded mandates than we did here, especially some way to be able to pay for the schools besides property tax. And I would like to mention one thing that I was able to do when I've been up here, and that was my kids, they all graduated from Laverne High School, and when I started, they said, "Dad, you need to give a scholarship to Laverne High School." And I'm proud to say that I've been able to do that for 16 years, that I've been able to give basically a $500 and a $1,000 scholarship to seniors up at Laverne High School, and that's one thing, probably wouldn't have done otherwise. Thank you.
Eight years of outstanding service to Rutherford County, going on to even bigger and better things possibly, but I think this, nothing is more important than local government, Charlie, so congratulations, we're proud of you, and you've served on the property management committee through this whole process of our judicial center that we now have opened, and we're just really proud of that, and thank you for your participation there, and certainly on the budget committee, I guess you've been on the budget the whole eight years, so, Charlie, you may, he's got, hey?
Thank you, I'm sorry, I prepared a few comments. Eight years ago, I saw the commissioners doing this, and so I, first of all, I'm very honored to have had the opportunity to serve on this commission. I feel like I've made a lot of good friends, two sets of commissioners, one each four-year term, elected officials, Mayor Burgess, department heads, I've worked, become very good friends with the commissioners on budget, and Ms. Nolan, we've spent a lot of time together going through budgets line by line. I've had one of the best seats in the House by Commissioner Johnson, he's been supportive, motivational, funny. I want to list a couple of the accomplishments that I think this group of commissioners and elected officials and department heads have achieved the last eight years, really. I think we've worked together in a very bipartisan way. We've refinanced bonds and saved a lot of money at lower interest rates. We have built almost a new, one new school a year. We've supported education by buying new computers and buying new technology, all while keeping the tax rate low. We've quietly put some money in our debt service account so that it'll be a little bit easier for the next commission to fund some of the next schools that are gonna be coming down the pike. Completed a new judicial building, sheriff's department's headed in the right direction. We started an audit committee, for several years, we had several findings. This last year, for the first time, we had no audit findings, and that's partly due to this commission, because we funded some of the software that had to be bought to remove some of those findings from our audit. We are fully funding our employees' retirement through Tennessee Consolidated Retirement System. We started a veterans court, we've been supporting mental health court and drug court. I'm very proud of these things, and I think everybody that I've mentioned in this room, department heads, commissioners, and elected officials should be as well. I've received a lot of advice, it's almost all been very, very good. I want to share one bit of advice that Jeff Jordan, who at the time was commissioner of District 13, shared with me. He said, "If you can help it, don't commit your vote before you hear the discussion on the county commission." I've mostly, with very, very few exceptions, followed his advice, and it's been meaningful to me, because the commissioners come from a lot of different perspectives, have a lot of different experiences. There have been a number of times where I've looked at the agenda, read the resolutions, thought I was gonna vote a certain way, only to come in here and hear the comments that the commissioners have said, and vote in a different direction, and I've been very relieved that I hadn't announced how I was gonna vote ahead of time. So I want to thank Jeff Jordan for that advice, I've used it from the start, and I want to share that with the new commissioners who are in the audience. I want to thank the commissioners and department heads, elected officials and employees for their support of me. I also want to take one moment to thank my wife. I recognize that this job could be a lot more difficult if you don't have the support of your spouse. She has not been standing at the front door with a stopwatch as I've left for commission meetings to see how long it takes for me to get back. She hasn't done that, she's been very, very supportive. She's actually not here tonight, because she's with my, one of my kids, my 12-year-old son, at Segal Middle School at a parent open house, and she's been very good to pick up some of the slack and do some of those things. Since she's not here, I guess that means she hasn't heard my comments about her, so it'd be helpful if you get a chance to tell her I said all that. And I just want to close by saying, I consider our work on this county commission to be some of the most meaningful time I have spent in my life, and I am leaving and will only have great memories of my time here. Thank you.
Okay, next we have Mr. Nipper here with us. He's going to be leaving us this go-round, and he's served with distinction on several of our important committees, and Public Works being one of them, so the only thing, we didn't solve all the solid waste problems, David, but at least we've given it a good start and a good effort there. Congratulations, you may say anything you choose to tell this group.
Well, I've always been told that the best speech is a short speech. Thank you all.
All right, thank you, Vicki. How many years have you actually been sitting in that seat helping these mayors out?
34.
34 years, that's pretty remarkable. So Senator Katrin, she knows every phone number and every moving piece in this, and who's on every committee, and how this process works together. So Commissioner Phillips, we're gonna let you address this and introduce our new participants that will be coming aboard.
Thank you, Mayor Burgess. Our new commissioners that will be coming aboard, I think all of them are here but one tonight, and I'd just like for you to stand and remain standing until we get to the end of this. District number one, David Gammon. David is... David, come on, come on up. I know, I know he's related, but let's just separate you from him right now, okay? David was elected to represent District One, and that's mostly the Laverne District. So David will be joining us the first of the month. Next is District Three, which is Michael Rather, and that's mostly the Leanna community, so Michael, if you'd come on up. Anywhere. Might be best if you got yourself between those two brothers. Next, representing District 14, which is North Murfreesboro and the Segal area, Virgil Gammon. Then we have District 15, Craig Harris, that's North Murfreesboro and the Oakland area. Craig's youngest son, I believe, is playing football tonight for Middle Tennessee Christian School, so he asked for us to forgive him for not being here tonight, but I've told him, as I've told many others, family first, family first, and he'll miss a lot of meetings in the future, a lot of family commitments in the future to attend some of these meetings. But tonight was his choice, and I think it's the right choice. But Craig Harris will be representing District 15, which is North Murfreesboro and Oakland. Then District 19 is Steve Irvin. Steve, that's mostly Blackmen in the Florence community. Last but not least, this is not a new commissioner, but it is a former commissioner, and Mayor-Elect Bill Katrin is with us. Bill, if you would come on up. I'm kind of hoping that you new commissioners will kind of got a taste of what you're in for, for at least the next four years, and maybe even for longer to come. As you probably witnessed, the debate on the floor tonight was all professional debate, nothing personal, but we've learned with this commission, and the couple of commissions before this, that debate is healthy for the most time. We don't always agree, and we won't always agree, but as long as you're speaking from something that you believe in, every commissioner almost will guarantee you will listen to you. Welcome aboard, we look forward to working with you. That's pretty much what I explained to Mayor Burgess that I wanted to do. Most of you are well aware of what's coming next, and it's not something that Mayor Burgess is going to relish, but it's something he's going to have to live through. And I'd ask Sonia Stevenson, our HR director, if she would also come up and join us. And while Sonia's coming up, I'll go over this little glass plaque. It says, Ernest G. Burgess, in recognition of 12 years of outstanding service to Rutherford County as Rutherford County Mayor, 2006 to 2018. This is very similar to what the outgoing mayors received, but we're just getting started. I know it's kind of an embarrassment, and I talked to Mayor Burgess a couple of weeks ago, and he said, "Do not do anything." And in the 12 years I've worked with him, I think I've done everything he's asked me to do, and I'm going to break that promise tonight by doing something that's a little bit different. I'm not 100% sure that I or we as a commission have the authority to do that, but Josh said do it anyway, so we're going to do it anyway. Here is a proclamation that I would like to read. Rutherford County, Tennessee, proclamation, whereas Ernest G. Burgess has served Rutherford County with distinction and honor as mayor since 2006, and whereas Mayor Burgess has served 12 years as mayor, and in those 12 years, he, along with the county commission, has opened the following buildings, Livestock Barn and Community Center at Lane Agri Park, Archives Building, Correctional Work Center, Juvenile Justice Center, two 24-hour fire stations, New Justice Center, and New Recovery Courts. He started... of others, and has earned the respect and affection of people from all walks of life and all ages who are proud to call him friend. Now therefore, I, Jeffrey Phillips, Chairman Pro Tem of Rutherford County Board of Commissioners, with the consent, support, and approval of the entire Rutherford County Board of Commissioners, do hereby proclaim, August sixteenth, twenty eighteen, as Mayor Ernest and Peggy Burgess Day in Rutherford County, Tennessee. With the sincere congratulations on their many accomplishments, and wishing them the very best life has to offer. Congratulations, Mayor."
Well, I'm just gonna say, "Thank you." I mean, I really appreciate it, and coming from all of you and expressing yourselves this way is, really means a lot to us, and yes, this little lady right here has always been a tremendous support, and all of you know what a beautiful smile she's got, so we're just happy to have been a part of this, and thank, we just want to say, "Thank God" for giving us a bit of ability, and a willingness to work hard, and a heart that really wants to help other people whenever we possibly can. So if we can do that, and we can be successful there, we'll all really truly be successful. And I'll just really say, I think that's been the reason we've all been so successful. We're just trying to do this, because it's the right thing to do, and because we need to serve and try to lead and help everyone that we can. And I'm just proud of Rutherford County, every one of you that's part of that, and every citizen here, we have a great county, and it's come a long, long ways. And I just sort of have to stop and remember that, how we got a hundred thousand more people here in twelve years, I'll never know, but it happened. And how that created at least ten thousand more students, it happened, and you stepped up and you were able to help us provide those facilities and resources that we need. So many great things have happened, a lot has yet to be accomplished, and I'm confident that we're gonna do even better than we've been able to do, and I just want to say, we wish you the best in all of that, and we just say, "Thank you" from the bottom of our hearts of allowing us just to be a small part of a great county that's gonna continue to be even greater. Thank you very, very much, we appreciate it. So I don't know if there's any other business or not, so I guess this is the last part of this business. I've been honored to serve with you, thank you so very, very much, we are adjourned.